Warning for this meeting was posted on the town's signboard and website and printed in the Chronicle on May 4th, 2023. It reads as follows. Town of Mansfield notices warning of annual town meeting. The electors of the Town of Mansfield and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 7-3 that the annual town meeting for budget consideration will be held at budgets to the purposes indicated, dated and signed at Mansfield, Connecticut, first day of May, 2023. Those eligible to vote at the town meeting include all registered voters and any person who is 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and liable to the town for taxes on property assessed for at least $1,000 on the last completed grand list. All those who meet these criteria should have already checked in with the registrars of voters and received a ballot before entering the auditorium. If you did not, please take a moment to do so now. We ask that those ineligible to vote and observing tonight's meeting sit in the cordoned off area to your right, and I will now entertain nominations for a moderator of tonight's meeting.
Bruce Clouette?
Bruce Clouette has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Bruce Clouette for moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Clouette.
Thank you very much for your vote of approval. I wish to welcome you all here tonight. It's great to see familiar faces, new faces, and to once again be participating in that great New England tradition of coming together in a town meeting to discuss important town business, in this case, the budget for the forthcoming year. I would like to take care of a few housekeeping matters before we get into the meeting proper. And the first housekeeping matter is, without objection, Town Clerk Sarah Ann Chain will serve as Secretary of the Meeting and Kevin Dennehy, Town Attorney, will serve as Parliamentarian for the meeting. Is there any objection to this? Not hearing any. Our Secretary will be Sarah Ann Chain and our Parliamentarian will be Kevin Dennehy. We will conduct this meeting according to, or traditionally we conduct our meeting according to Robert's Rules of Order. Without objection, our rules for this evening's meetings will be Robert's Rules of Order. Is there any objection to this? Not seeing any objection. Robert's Rules will serve as our rules for the meeting. Traditionally, we make one change to Robert's Rules, which is to limit the speaking time on motions to five minutes. Robert's Rules allows 10 minutes, and we found that five minutes is generally sufficient for everyone to make their point, keeping in mind that after everyone has spoken on a particular motion, then you may speak a second time for up to five minutes if we adopt this rule. So without objection, we will adopt the duration time for speaking as five minutes. Is there any objection? Not hearing any. We have set the rule at five minutes speaking time. Are there any other rules that people have in mind to introduce for the meeting? Not hearing any. We will move on. Just a couple of other housekeeping things. When you came in, you should get your paper ballot. The final vote on the budget will be by paper ballot. You should have this. If you don't, go to the back of the room and make sure that you get one. You also should have, as for your reference, this packet that has been passed out. The packet has got a lot of information that is necessary. For example, on page 11 is the summary of the budget process as specified in the town This meeting is specified in the town charter. What we do here is to approve, turn down, or amend the budget adopted by the town council. And the procedures for that are outlined on page 11 and 12. Oh, one other thing. Apparently, in some earlier materials, the pilot amount for fiscal year 2122 was misstated. The correct pilot amount appears on page 32 and is $12.9 million, not the earlier figure of $13.9. So your packet has all the right figures in it. Traditionally, before we open the citizen part of this budget town meeting, we ask the mayor to give us a brief set of comments. So without further ado, I will call on Mayor Antonia Maria for her comments.
Thank you, Bruce. He's much taller than I am. This always feels to be like a kind of a new year. The budget really sets our priorities for the year, so we have reached the conclusion of the process, and we are about to embark on the new budget on July 1st. So we have already set some of our priorities. But I'd like to give you a little bit of information about what we have done over the past year. It's certainly been a challenge as we came out of the pandemic and also as there has been very significant amounts of change in our revenue structure. So not in the structure, but in the amounts of money that we are dealing with. The biggest number, of course, of unexpected prior to the pandemic's money is the money that has come from the ALPA grants, the American Recovery Grants. We have spent a good deal of time last year and this year looking at ways of getting that money usefully into the community and also to use it for town projects that will not obligate us for future tax increases. So, for example, last night, we allocated $75,000 to three nonprofits for very significant renovations and improvements in their buildings, like part of the new roof for Wayne. These three nonprofits all serve Mansfield residents extensively, even though they are located in a neighboring town. And in addition, we have allocated money for small businesses and for nonprofits located within Mansfield. So this is a process that will be ongoing. We have made our recommendations base very heavily on recommendations from the town manager, but the council itself has been very committed to using this money as wisely as possible and making sure that residents of Mansfield have the largest benefit from it possible. We've also had ongoing negotiations with the university. Of course, you all know there's a new president, so things are in transition. Her staff is changing, and we are finding our way through that maze. We have been told and we are committed to maintaining a collaborative and cooperative relationship with the university, particularly around issues like economic development. We'll see how it goes. The other thing that has happened is that with the increased pilot money, we have made some significant improvements in municipal services. We've added a number of positions in the fire department. We've added some positions in the human services program. Maybe positions should be a position. We've discussed so many, I can't remember what the exact number is at the moment, but we are certainly improving services to local residents. The biggest increase that we are using this money for is significant improvement to town roads. We have gone from something like $300,000 for road maintenance to $1,300,000 during this period, and we are continuing to invest in improving the quality of the road surfaces and also the drainage and working toward getting more sidewalks, more bike trails, and more complete streets, although that's more of a promise than an actual achievement at this point. Over the next couple of years, you will be seeing a great deal of discussion of town facilities. We spent a lot of time, well, council didn't, the board of ed and the building committee spent a lot of time over the past year, so building a new school, which I hope all of you go to see, it's wonderful. But now we have to turn our attention to some other parts of town facilities in very serious need of repair or replacement. Everything from a firehouse that's too small for the largest tire engine to problems with town hall. Everybody knows that there are real limitations with the senior center, and we are going to be looking at a whole range of facilities issues over the next year. Our first stage in these programs is to engage the public in discussion on what's wrong with what we have and what is necessary to meet Mansfield residents' needs. So please stay tuned and please participate in those when you have a chance. At the request of staff and particularly the town manager, the council approved a four-day work week experiment. We have been finding it difficult to recruit staff, and we've seen that one of the things that new young professionals want is more flexibility in their lives, and a longer work day in exchange for an additional day off is one that has proven to be quite attractive. So the experiment is still ongoing, but we're very hopeful that it will succeed and make these better both for existing staff and also as a recruiting tool. In addition, we have continued to shape our programs, our plans around the goals and ideals of inclusion, welcoming, diversity, and sustainability. This year, we were awarded a silver award from the Connecticut Sustainability, Sustainable Connecticut is the name of the organization, and they are developing a gold certification, which we will be hoping to achieve in the next year or two. So that's just a brief oversight of some of the things that we have been trying to do this year. I think you will find that the budget for the coming year sustains these programs. There is not much improvement in this budget. It is pretty much a stable system. In fact, even though there's some increase, you'll find that the increases are less than the rate of inflation, so we are really quite pleased with the budget that we've gotten through. So I will end my remarks and let Mr. Shaken explain the fine details. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Shaken. I'm our deputy mayor, and I'm also chair of the town council's finance committee, which is why I get to make the presentation to you all this year. It's very nice to see all of you. Thanks to Mayor Moran for your remarks and for your leadership on the town council through this budget process. We have a, what we think is a very responsible and a good budget to present to you this evening, and I'm going to go through it in some detail. Before I get into the details of the budget, just a quick overview on what it is that is in this budget, what does the Town of Mansfield do? This is a sort of list of the big buckets in the budget, the biggest being our public education system. Mayor Moran spoke to most of these things, but these are some of the things that the council and our boards of education were thinking about when we went through our budget processes. You know, our first priority on the council was to maintain Mansfield's exceptional municipal services, but here are some other areas that we thought about and tried to prioritize as we move. Just a quick note on the process that we have before we go into details. Of course, a budget is a policy document. It's probably the most important policy document that your elected officials work on. It sets the goals of the town and it spends the taxpayers' dollar. There's two different kinds of parts of the budget, two different sections. There's an operating budget, which is the dollars that the town and the boards of education spend every day to run their services, and then there's a capital budget, which is the sort of investment of one-time dollars to pay for projects, usually projects of a pretty large size. And then this little graph, if you can read it, looks like you can pretty well, is sort of our process here, and it's a never-ending one. Staff started working on this budget in the fall, and the boards of education worked on their budgets all winter. At the council side, the town manager presented his budget to us, his recommendation from the staff at the end of March, and then the council spent all of April meeting with department heads and deliberating parts of the budget. We adopted a budget on April 24th and sent it to you at the town meeting. We will adopt a budget tonight at the town meeting, and then town staff will implement that budget starting on July 1st, the beginning of the fiscal year. And then we have an independent review of all of our finances as well, an annual audit that's done by outside accountants. So, details of the budget. Here's our summary of the budget for this year. First, just to put our bottom line up front, this budget maintains our existing service levels and it sustains our increased annual investment in capital improvements that we've been making the last few years. We have seen increases in our operating expenses, and they're due primarily to the increases in fixed and contractual costs, not new services. So we've all felt inflation at home, and we are feeling it as a town. There's also been virtually no growth in our grand list. The grand list is the amount of the value of the total property in town. It's what we base our taxes on, and between last year and this year, it stayed flat. Asks is our state aid. We get a lot of money in aid from the state government that is also, is likely to stay flat this year. It does require an increase to fund these services of 1.14 mils, which is just under 4%. It continues the council's pays you bill capital program, which we'll talk about. It addresses some needed upgrades to municipal buildings, other infrastructure, and it preserves a healthy funding, a healthy savings account for the town. So here is a snapshot. This is what is in the budget. It's a $63.4 million budget in total on the operating side with an additional $4.9 million in capital expenses in the capital non-recurring fund, which is sort of our holding tank. Dollars come in before we disperse them out from various sources of $4.5, $4.4 million. As you'll see here, education, like I said, is the majority of this budget. Mansfield Public School System, our pre-K through eight system, is about $24.8 million. The region, the school district, high school, Yosemite High School, about $12 million, and the town is about $26.6 million. As I mentioned about our process, the manager proposed the budget in March, and then the council deliberated and dove into the detail of it and then proposed some changes. And so this is sort of a summary of the manager's budget versus the council's budget. The council made some reductions or asked the manager to make some reductions to his budget to reflect some of the priorities that the council felt needed to be represented. And so those reductions are reflected in the budget that you see before you. They include about a $70,000 reduction on the operating side. There's a reduction to the prediction for overtime in our fire department. We're expecting to bring on new staff very, very soon, which will ease in some of their overtime needs. And then $350,000 in reduction from the capital budget, which represents a variety of projects, most of which are being delayed, not canceled. So moving on. Summary of the revenue. So we collect money and we spend money on this budget. There's a lot of different sources of revenue, but as you can see in this pie chart, almost all of them come from two sources. First, about 60%, exactly 60%, from taxes, from the property taxes that the town levies on real estate, on motor vehicles, on personal property, for commercial property, and on intergovernmental, another 37% on intergovernmental revenue. And that's a fancy word for state aid primarily. That is the money that the state pays the Town of Mansfield for a variety of things. The biggest chunks, we'll get into in a minute, and then the rest of the things on this list, licenses, charges, et cetera, are all sort of captured in this other bucket. And so you can see the things that we collect elsewhere is a relatively small portion of our budget. So let's break this down a little bit, talk about tax revenue. These are the property taxes that you pay on your vehicle every year, on your house every year, whether in lump sums or part of your mortgage. This is our grand list, and this is the list that I talked about of all the different property in town. You'll see in this list that as of October 1st, we have just shy of $1 billion in property value in real estate and just over $100 million in personal property, which is the value of desks and computers and things like that that businesses own. And then just shy of $112 million in motor vehicle property, so value of cars in town. And as you can see in this chart, like I said, it has remained virtually flat. The increase in motor vehicles here is sort of a fluke of the state bureaucracy in downtown where the DMV reassesses the value of your car every year, but municipalities are only permitted to revalue the value of your home every five years. And so the last revaluation that the Town of Mansfield did was in 2019. If you've been paying any attention to the real estate market, you know that houses are worth a little bit different more than they were in 2019. And so we have a revale coming up next year, and so this grand list number is going to change pretty dramatically, most likely as long as the housing market stays in the trajectory that it's been on. Moving on to intergovernmental and state aid. Again, we are projecting a flat funding here. The governor's proposed budget for the next fiscal year proposes that, and because the state is not likely to adopt their budget until about a month from now, we traditionally take the governor's budget as sort of a prediction because it's kind of the safest bet for where things will be for state aid. So we are not anticipating an increase or a decrease in where the state funds services in the next fiscal year. These are, the next part here is sort of where the primary sources are of this funding. And the biggest buckets here are education. The state contributes a significant amount of money to every town for education through a program called the Education Cost Sharing Grant. And then also in Mansfield, because we have so much property that's owned by the state, by the university primarily, we receive payments in lieu of taxes. The state doesn't pay property tax on property that it owns. It instead pays municipalities a portion of what it would pay in property taxes in pilot. And both of these bullets actually supplemental revenue sharing and pilot program represent payments that are based on the amount of state property that we have in town. Here's sort of a chart that shows our pilot payments over time. You'll see between the last two bars there that we are anticipating it's flat for this year, but you'll also see two years ago, three years ago, there was a significant increase in the amount of money that Mansfield received from the state before pilot. The state passed a law that had a major reform in its pilot system in that municipalities like us, with a huge proportion of state-owned property, received a lot more money. And so those are some of the expenses that the mayor spoke about earlier that have been funded through this increase, increase in staff and public safety and human services, as well as investment in some urban infrastructure and payments for debt services, which I'll get to. So that's the revenue side, quick summary. Here's our expenditures on the town side. You'll see this pie chart here. This adds up to the $63.4 million. That is the whole budget. You'll see the sort of visual representation here of education between the region and the board. And then the rest of this pie chart is the town services broken up by department or category. The biggest two categories in the town are public safety and public works. So public safety is our fire department and all of their staff, their equipment is in our capital budget, and our payment to the state for the use of the Connecticut State Police through the resident trooper program. And the public works is everything that has to do with roads. So snow plowing and road paving and tree cutting and everything that you see our public works crews out doing every day is in that section of the budget. And then the other sections are considerably smaller as a proportion of both the town's budget and the budget overall. We included this chart as sort of an introduction into some of what the drivers of the increases, the changes in our budget were this year, and this sort of shows where we have had some sort of significant increases. So keep in mind, as we talk about this chart, that inflation year over year from last year to this year has been somewhere in the neighborhood of about 8%. And so you're seeing budgets here from all these different buckets that increase at rates that are lower than the rate of inflation with two exceptions. The first one is our contribution to capital, and the second one is our debt contribution. And we're going to talk about what goes into both of those in detail in a second. So here are the big drivers of increases in our budget. First one is employee wages and benefits. We have, that is the biggest single increase that you see across the board in our budget. These are obligated and nondiscretionary wage increases, meaning the town council didn't just vote to give everybody a raise as part of this budget. We have a number of collective bargaining units of unions that represent our staff that have negotiated collective bargaining agreements with the town, and those agreements usually last for multiple years and include wage increases and step increases for town staff. We also do, though, have to think about staying competitive in the current labor market. This is a very hot labor market for employees and a very difficult labor market for employers, and doing everything possible to make sure that we're attracting really wonderful talent to Mansfield to fill positions is really important. So the mayor talked about our four-day work week. That's one of the many non-monetary things that we're doing, but we also have to think about our competitiveness as an employer from a monetary perspective. Also related to employer, we've had benefit cost increases. In particular, health insurance costs have gone up. This is something that every employer is facing everywhere. I think the national rate of inflation for healthcare costs is somewhere in the neighborhood of 20%, and we have certainly experienced costs miserably with that. And then finally, we have a retirement system here. Our employees are part of a Connecticut State Retirement System for municipal employees called MERS, and our contribution costs for that program have also increased. In this chart, you'll sort of see over time the increase. It is a pretty constant line here. We're not seeing big increases in one year compared to the other year. Just the cost of doing business, if you will, which is primarily the cost of staff for us in every business, has increased every year and is increasing this year. The next driver in our budget is capital, and the council has, over the last several years, expressed a pretty strong desire to accelerate the progress that we make addressing a number of deteriorating infrastructure needs in town, primarily our roads and the associated costs with our roads. You've all noticed it, I'm sure. What we have discovered as we have begun paving roads is that almost all of our roads need to be completely reclaimed instead of just repave them. Instead of just putting pavement on top of what's there, we basically need to rip the road up and redo all of the drainage and then put a new road down on top of it. I mean, that has increased our costs, and we've decided to make an investment in road repaving so that we can keep up progress and keep the roads in good shape. As the mayor mentioned, we are dealing with a number of municipal buildings that are aging and need capital work, and so we've made investments there when needed and are planning for the future. So we've made some investments in planning costs as well. And as the mayor mentioned, we also do have federal funding from the American Rescue Plan Act that has been able to help offset some of these costs. So this is a breakdown by department of where the capital budget goes. Again, this is $4.9 million in the budget. The education system's capital budget is part of our budget. They don't have their own capital budget, and so you're seeing capital expenses here both for the town and for the Mansfield Board of Education. As you will see here, the vast majority of these funds are going into public works. And so this is the million plus, $1.2, $1.3 million in the budget that we have put towards repaving roads. And this is that in monetary form. I stand corrected, $2.7 million in public works. There's an additional $785,000 in buildings. This is costs for needed upgrades in municipal buildings. And the other thing I will sort of call out here is public safety. These are annual investments that we need to make to keep primarily firefighter equipment up to date. Every year, their equipment's on a replacement cycle, so every year we have to buy a certain amount of new equipment for the fire department. This is just a quick slide here to note that the taxes are not the only source of revenue for the capital fund. This is that holding tank I was talking about, the capital non-recurring fund. Most of the dollars in here are from the general fund. We make a contribution. We make a contribution of your tax dollars into this holding tank. Tank holds it, and when we're ready to spend the money on a capital project, it leaves the tank and gets spent. But there's other sources here too, primarily other state grants that are listed here that we receive that get held in this fund. And then the next driver in our budget is debt service. So we have a capital program called Pay As You Go. And that means that we try to fund every capital project in cash. So we try to, rather than borrowing money to pay for a $50,000 project or a $200,000 project, we try to save up over time out of the general fund. So we don't have to pay interest. But there are some projects where it's too large to do that and we do need to bond. And when we do bond, we go to the voters. The reason that there's been an increase in this debt service is because we've issued several bonds over the last few years. And you'll see that in the chart. Looks like you can read it better than me. But the three sort of jumps here in '20 and '21 is when the bond actually got issued for the remaining costs of the construction of the sewer system at Four Corners. That was approved by voters in 2014. The state paid for most of that project, but the town did have to bond for a portion of it. Secondly, we put a roof on this building that included a substantial photovoltaic solar panel array. And then third, obviously, the most recent project that you're all familiar with is our new school. We issued bonds for that project last year. Last year, we made an interest-only payment on the project. But now that it's completed, this upcoming year, we will be making a payment that is interest and principal. And then finally, inflation. We've all felt this, as I said, at the grocery store and our electric bills. We bought a car recently. You know how much more things are costing now than they did a few years ago. We've seen historically high rates of inflation, basically since the beginning of the pandemic. And the town's costs are not immune from it. So we talked about employees and their wages. That's definitely something that's part of inflation. But there's other things too. Our energy costs are up 70% year over year. Our fuel costs, gas for our cars, is up 30% per gallon. All of us have felt that at home, but what we probably haven't felt at home is things like asphalt, which we have to pay for to pave our roads. 10% increase in asphalt and other things like that. So those are some of the other drivers that are in, that you see in the budget sort of wrapped into some of our increased costs. Lastly, before I pass things over to my colleague from the Board of Education, just want to talk about our fund balance. I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, fund balance is the town savings account. This is money that we, over the years, have saved up to have in the event of a rainy day. And what you can see in this chart is this was an initiative of the late Bill Ryan, my predecessor on the town council. When he joined the town council along with the mayor in 2009, we had about 4% of our budget in fund balance. And the council set a goal first at 10%, which was now, over time, increased to 17%. It's not just a savings account. This is a number that ratings agencies look at when they're deciding what interest rate they're going to give you on a bond. And so this is the other major reason that we have this fund balance and want to maintain it at a healthy level. When we borrow money, we get a much better interest rate because we have these dollars in savings. Our budget does propose a sort of one-time draw of $300,000 from this fund. And so last year, we had 20% in the fund balance. This budget would bring it down to 18.3% in combination of the draw and the increase in the base. But it still remains above our policy target. And we were comfortable proposing that due to the fact that it's paying for a one-time capital expense, several one-time capital expenses, and the fact that we anticipate sometime next year or the following year, we will have a significant addition to our property tax revenue in the large housing development that's being constructed at Four Corners where Video Visions in Willards used to be. So with that, I will invite my colleague Kathy Ward, the Chair of the Board of Education of Savings and Savings. She can talk about the board's budget.
Good evening, everyone. As Ben said, I'm Kathy Ward, Chair of the Mansfield Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about our budget tonight. I'm just going to present a brief overview and then I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Dart for pickers. Everything we do on the Mansfield Board of Education is driven by our mission. It's driven by our core beliefs. So that includes putting together a budget that maintains the breadth and depth of the programming that we have currently. We make sure that we have the staffing to continue the programs that we're very proud of. So everything that we do is driven by these core beliefs. We make sure we have the staffing. We make sure we use student data. And all of this goes into making sure that our budget is not only fiscally responsible, but provides the education that we need for our students. So briefly, we have some wonderful things that go on in our district. We have, once again, we had a state finalist for Teacher of the Year. It seems like the last five years, I think we've had someone either in the running or as a finalist. And the year before last, I believe, the State Teacher of the Year. Our kids in grades three through eight consistently outperform students in area towns. We have teachers that are recognized for their excellence. And we just found out that Larry Barlow, our principal at Mansfield Middle School, has been selected as a finalist for New Principal of the Year. So we have a lot of things to be proud of. I don't want to go through all of it, but we're doing some good work and this budget does help us continue on that path. So next is the budget. I'm just going to give you, as I said, the overview. Our Board of Ed adopted a district budget of $24.8 million. That's a 3.5% increase over the current year. 3.1% of that increase is due to obligated costs of staff salaries and benefits. So it's 84% of our budget goes to salaries and obligated benefits. And then this is just a brief overlook of the, look back on our increases, which of course are determined by what our needs are. Our staffing needs, whatever our programming needs are. So it will go up and down reflecting what it is that we need to do. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Dart.
Thank you. And always an honor to speak on behalf of our students, families, and educators. We're proud of what we do each and every day here at Mansfield Public Schools. Part of our work is to always think about approaching, budgeting, and work through a needs-based lens. With that, we know that we've asked for a 3.5% increase. 3.1% of it is obligated salaries and benefits. So in the .4 that makes up the 3.5, that would include five proposed positions that we feel are best to meet the needs of our students, our scholars, our educators, and families. Part of that is recognizing enrollment has increased in third grade. For next year, we're going from a five-teacher team to a six-teacher team. We also have a need to service our English language learner students. And we proposed a certified teacher of English to speakers of other languages to offset that. We currently use our world language teachers. We use a consortium of tutors. Sometimes we use interns. And so it's time to step up and meet the needs of all students, including our English learners. In this budget, we've proposed two behavior technicians or social-emotional learning specialists. These are non-certified staff members. And they are simply a conduit between the teacher and student and sometimes the front office. We know that coming out of the pandemic, we see students who often are struggling to maintain the expectations in the classroom. We want to make sure our teachers feel supported and our students have time to reset and to re-enter the classroom space or to provide the services. So these two non-certified positions, each costing about $40,000, would help us be an intermediary, a conduit between the teacher-student, repairing that relationship, and if needed, then administration could help out. This comes directly from conversations that we've had with our teachers who need this support and have talked about the challenges that we're seeing in our student behaviors. We also see an uptick in the need to provide speech-language services. We feel that we can do this with a SLIPUS, Speech-Language Pathologist Assistant. It's a cost-saving, can do the same thing as a pathologist, but simply would have to work under the supervision of a speech pathologist. So we feel that's a very forward-thinking position. And then finally, a custodian that would be roving. We've done an analysis of our costs in overtime and substitutes. And we feel that we will save actually money by having this roving custodian. So we won't rely on overtime of other staff members to cover. We certainly are feeling the challenges of a new 80,000-square-foot building with a lot of technology and a lot of moving parts. And so we want to make sure that we continue to invest in our buildings and facilities. Budget drivers, not unlike what the deputy mayor talked about, we certainly see the impact of inflation. We know that 3.1% of our proposed budget is negotiated salaries agreements. That's through collective bargaining. We're obligated to do that. We've seen the healthcare increases, increases in transportation. We know Board of Education class-size guidelines cause us to look carefully and maintain appropriate-sized classes. But we also have seen the need to invest in social-emotional learning, such as with the behavior technician. We're feeling the challenges of a sunsetting ARC-ESR fund that we've used for tutors and intervention and professional learning. And we have unfunded mandates from the State Department of Education. Example of this would be the Science of Reading, where we're not receiving additional funds, but we're required to do a study of our reading program and implement changes. And so that's on our watch and we need to make sure that we appropriately fund that. And then finally, I just want to make sure that we are also expanding our enrichment programs and school programs to not only the middle school, but to the elementary. As we've talked about with the salaries and benefits, you can see here that our proposed increase is the 3.1, over about $762,000 increase. And the proposed positions would add about $300,000 to the budget. Cost-saving strategies. We know that we need to be fiscally responsible in our budget. We know that sustainability is in the air that we breathe here in Mansfield. And so I'm very proud that we have made strategic reductions in energy use. We've invested in energy technology. Our two buildings have the solar photovoltaic panels that will significantly reduce not only our bonds on fossil fuels, but we'll see savings in our budget. We've reduced positions such as teacher leader stipends. We've reduced the need for textbooks. And we've seen a significant decrease in consumable supplies. We do get a lot of questions regarding the savings of consolidating the elementary schools. In the '21-'22 budget, that is where you saw the greatest savings, where we reduced staff members, such as two principals. We reduced certified staff 3.5 and non-certified 5.5. So those positions were not added into this year's budget. We only have two principals. We did not add two other principals. We eliminated enrichment, teacher, literacy coach, PE, music. Those were realized cost savings when we looked at the result of consolidating three smaller elementary schools that had a redundancy of services and programs. We also know that there was a savings of about $1.3 million when we looked at the bigger piece of salary benefits, energy, and other costs, such as building operations. What I didn't put on the slide that I probably should have is just the overall cost avoidance. You may recall that our three elementary schools were in need of capital improvement. And so when we did a five-to-10-year look ahead, we were looking at about $30 million of required renovations that included 88 bathrooms, septic, water, plumbing, roof, ventilation, boilers in two of the buildings. And so you won't see those in the budget. But that cost avoidance is real. And now that we've invested in a new building, we can look ahead. Finally, I'll just share this as I share with other colleagues across the state. We all are pretty much in the same boat. We're feeling inflation. These are all the districts in Connecticut. The scatter plot shows you where their budgets are coming in. Mansfield is the red line at 3.5. So you see well over a majority of districts have significant increases in their budget. And with that, I will conclude our report.
I will now call upon Deputy Mayor Kavashakin to introduce the motion that we will be voting on tonight. This is a single motion with four resolutions. In a minute.
We've got a couple more slides.
That's okay, but I will do it at the end of this.
So I just wanted to sum things up here and talk about what that means for you and your wallets and our mil rate here. So the mil rate is our tax rate. It's what we call tax, property taxes in Connecticut. It is the amount that your property is taxed on based on its assessed value, which is 70% of its fair market value as determined by the town's assessor during our every-five-year revaluation process. So in Mansfield, as of October 1st, the median home price on our grand list was $228,860. If that seems low to you, it's because it is. Like I talked about, this is 2019, so think back to what your house was worth or you thought your house was worth in 2019 and its relativity to this number. 70% of that number is $160,200. And so that house this year paid $4,867 in taxes. With this budget, that house would pay $5,050 per year. That's a $183 increase for this house per year. For the median house, a $15 per month increase. Just a quick sort of note here, you'll see the chart on the right, some history. This mil rate of 31.52 is only very slightly over the mil rate from two years ago. So if you can remember last year at this meeting, we adopted a budget that actually cut the mil rate by a mil. So we cut taxes last year. And there was some conversation at that town meeting that a number of these costs were going to have to be absorbed into next year's budget. And so they have. That is a mil rate increase of 1.14. And so we sort of broke this down in a different way earlier. But again, where your taxes go for this median household of $5,050 per year, 58%, 2,900 of those dollars go to education, both the pre-k through eight and the regional high school contribution. And then the rest of the breakdown is here for municipal government. This general government line seems pretty general and broad. It is. It is so high because it is where we put our employee benefits in our budgeting process. And so that's the bulk of the cost there. Just like the superintendent did, I wanted to show sort of a comparison of where our mil rate stands for other towns. It's pretty difficult to compare the actual tax amount because your property is valued differently depending on which town you live in. As an example, the mil rate in Greenwich is like 11 because the house is worth a lot more money there than it is here. But these are towns both immediately surrounding Mansfield and also some other towns around the state that we tend to benchmark ourselves against, towns with a similar population, similar level of school system, similar level of income, et cetera. And as you'll see here, our taxes, this mil rate is lower than pretty much every single town on this list. These are last year's mil rate numbers for these towns as well. And if I had to guess, I would imagine that most of their finance directors are standing on a podium tonight asking for a mil rate increase as well. So finally, in summary... So finally, in summary, the budget provides funding to sustain our service levels. Our grand list, the amount that we can use to fund those services, is pretty much flat. But we know that that's going to change pretty substantially in the next year. There's at least one major project under construction right now that when it is open will be valued quite high and will pay a lot in taxes. It does assume level state funding, and if that changes in a month, we will have to adjust as a council. It requires this mil rate increase of 1.14 mils and a draw of $300,000 from the fund balance. It meets all of our contractual and discretionary obligations. It continues our pay-as-you-go program. It does preserve a healthy fund balance. Just a sort of note of appreciation to everybody involved in this process. I'm not going to read everyone's names here, but our town council is listed here. Our Board of Education is listed here. Raise your hand if you're on the town council so folks can see and acknowledge you. Raise your hand if you're on either this Board of Education or the Regional Board of Education. And then a big thank you to town staff who have spent a huge, huge amount of time for the last five or six months preparing this budget and coming up with options for the elected officials to consider. This is a list of all of our department heads and administrators. Raise your hand if you're a town staff in the room so folks can acknowledge you as well. So again, thank you. This is a note that Bruce is going to cover, voting on programs. And I'll go back to it, Bruce, when I'm done with the motion. So here are, here's the motion that I'm going to make tonight. I am going to read it, and we can then begin debate from the floor, which is your turn to ask questions and make any changes. So resolve that the proposed general fund budget for the town of Mansfield for fiscal year July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $51,436,530, which the proposed budget was adopted by the council on April 24th, 2023, be adopted, and that the sums estimated and set forth in said budget be appropriate for the purpose indicated. Further, resolve that in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-51, the proportionate share for the town of Mansfield of the annual budget for Regional School District Number 19 shall be added to the general fund budget appropriation for the town of Mansfield for fiscal year July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, and said sums shall be paid by the town to the Regional School District as they become available. Further, resolve that the proposed Capital Projects Fund budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $4,913,250, be adopted, provided that the portion proposed to be funded by bonds or notes shall at the appropriate times be introduced for action by the town council, subject to a vote by referendum as required by Section 407 of the Town Charter. And finally, resolve that the proposed Capital and Non-Recurring Reserve Fund budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $4,453,050, be adopted.
Thank you very much. Now's the time for citizens to speak about the budget. If you wish to speak, I would ask that you stand and recognize. Then come to the, one of the two microphones. State your name and your address. Deputy Mayor suggests a second for his budget resolution. Is there a second? Thank you very much. Starting over. If you wish to speak, either stand or raise your hand if you're not able to stand. And when I call on you, come to the microphone and state your name and your address. You will have five minutes to address the meeting. You can use that time for one of three things. You can offer comments about the budget as presented in your packet and elucidated by the presentations tonight. You can urge your fellow citizens to approve it, to reject it, et cetera. The second thing that you can do is ask factual questions, which will then be answered by the council, the Board of Education, town staff. If you ask a factual question, and the answer, the time it takes for the town staff to make an answer will not count towards your five minutes. In other words, you'll get an answer, then you go on. The clock starts running again for your five minutes. Lastly, the charter specifies that you may move to amend the budget. And an amendment takes the form of increasing or decreasing a program item. If you want to make an amendment and feel nervous about the format of doing so, don't worry. We will work with you to make sure that the amendment is, reflects your intentions, and is properly worded for their meeting to vote on. If you turn to page 25 of your packet, you will see the programs listed that you may amend, either by increasing or lowering the dollar amount. For example, the first one is Program 11100, Legislative, that's the town council, proposed $133,430. Please note that on page 26, the Board of Education is a single program within the town budget. So if you are recommending increases or decreases to the Board of Education, you would reference Program 60001, $24,801,880. So as I said, we will certainly help to make sure that your motion is in order and reflects your intent. So don't be shy about making motions. Does anyone wish to address the meeting? Ms. Buck, I call on you.
I only have a question, and that is, based on the planned capital project expenditures, I noticed that the figure for Public Works is quite large, $2,750,000. This is not a complaint. I think Public Works probably deserves it. But I would like to know what that includes. What are those projects in Public Works?
Okay, I'll ask the town manager to answer that question.
It's not on. So the, the single largest aspect of the $2.7 million that you referenced is the paving budget, which I believe is around $1.8 or $1.9 million this year. But there's also a number of equipment upgrades, so things like bucket loaders and other items that are used, obviously, to do the work. The work can't be done without the equipment necessary to do the work. And then some additional investments in some pedestrian safety areas. But certainly, the lion's share of that $2.75 million that you reference is paving drainage.
I see. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and address.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Orlando Kelfi, and I live at 28 Old Wood Road. I'd like to start off by thanking the town manager, finance chair, all of the department heads for both the education system and for our town, the Board of Education, City Council, for their hard work in this effort. I'm very familiar with the budgeting process, and it does take quite a lot of time and discussion. I'm going to, I'm going to try to stay within my five minutes as best as I can. I'm going to start with a budget message from the mayor. So in the budget message, down in the second paragraph, they talk about the Board of Education portion of the budget that is going to support the current class size. And yet, there are realized cost savings from staffing reductions, energy and operating expenses projected with consolidation to one elementary school. So we saw the $1.3 million. We've heard a lot of words tonight about flat. Our revenues are going to be flat. We have inflation. Costs are going up. And in these realized savings, including that $1.3 million, there's still a 5.1% increase. So the question I have, and it's rhetorical in nature, is, did those cost savings result in a 5.1% increase? Meaning, they kept it at that? And if we didn't have those cost savings, would there be greater than a 5.1% increase? Something to think about. So then they go down and move on, and they talk about, two years ago, they talked about statutory formulas. And there's very strong, confident language in here. They use words like significantly increased payments, enhanced revenues, confident it will be reliable for years to come. We're going to keep our mil rate constant. It's what it says in here. But if it's not constant, it's increasing. They want to increase this yet. They're saying it's constant, so... I thought it was. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you speak even in the mic?
I thought I...
You have to get right on it like this in order for people to hear you. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Don't turn your head away, or you kind of...
So did everybody hear what I just said, or do I need to repeat?
No, you're good.
Okay. And then, and then moving on, so we go down and we talk about the grand list, right? They, they talk about the grand list is projected to increase substantially within the next year. And they, they give you some hope. They say, as the grand list grows, we believe it will be possible to reduce the mil rate. So they're setting this up. And what I'd like to do at this point is, I would like to make an amendment through, through the chair. I would like to make an amendment to start with to reduce Item 60001, which is the education budget. I would like to make a motion to reduce the education budget by anywhere between $500,000 and $800,000.
I think it would be best to give an absolute figure.
I, I don't, I'm not going to be the one who gives a precise number. That's going to be up to the council and the Board of Education.
No, but I need to say, your motion is to reduce Program 60001, which is now $24,801,000, by how much?
$500,000.
All right. By $500,000 to $24,301,880. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded to that motion. You may now speak to your motion.
All right, so in looking at the previous years, and I, trust me, I'm all for education. We've seen that we've consolidated from, you've heard the gentleman, the superintendent talk to us about bringing offline three elementary schools into down to one new elementary school. We now have two schools, so we do have overlap. We should have some realized cost savings. You saw the superintendent show you that last year, I believe, they reduced two principals and some other positions. Right now, in looking at the figures over the past 10 years, enrollment in the state in schools has been decreasing. And I'm certain that's, that's applicable here to this school district, that we are seeing a reduction in the number of students. You'll see that administration staff has increased quite significantly, maybe 60, 65% overall over the past 10 years. And you see the cost per student continue to increase, and that affects all of us. So with, for example, they want, they want to hire three positions, a director of teaching and learning. It's $160,000. They want to add an assistant principal, we nearly just got rid of the principals, for another $130,000. They want to add a technical integrationist, which is $110,000. Three positions right there is $400,000. They don't have to hire it. We're almost at the $500,000. I think this is doable, and it's going to realize savings for all of us because that's part of the budget that we're going to attack or address. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Would someone else like to speak to the amendment? The motion before you now moved and seconded is to lower Program 60001, education K through 8, by $500,000. Yes, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Terry Berthlot, 143 Coventry Road. It's all about savings. We built a new school, and part of the, part of it was because we had old schools that were failing, and it was going to be expensive to renovate them. And it ultimately made more sense to, to build one new school, and a school that we should all be very proud of. It's a school of the future. And I hope, as was said before, that everybody gets an opportunity to walk through it. But this idea that the school board is adding on administrative people, when you look at who's being added, you see, in fact, a speech-language pathologist assistant, somebody to help young children learn to speak well, learn to speak in a way that they'll be able to flourish in the school systems. Who are the other folks that they're adding? They're adding a person, a few people, to help children who speak English as a second language, to ensure that they will flourish in our school systems and go on to become very productive adults in our community. Who else are we adding? Shoot. I had one more I wanted to mention. Oh, my goodness, yes. The behavior technicians. Folks who will, when a child is not doing well in the classroom, so the school teacher doesn't have to stop what they're doing, can work with the child and help that child refocus or possibly leave the room and get the attention that they need. These are so important, every single one of them. The idea that taking away $500,000 so that we're, we're not adding to the budget is heartbreaking. The future is our kids, and I hope you will all not support this motion. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak to this? Yes.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, speak right on the mic, right close to it.
My name is Brian Coleman. I live at 26 Center Street, Mansfield, Center, Connecticut. I hope you can all support this motion tonight. As taxpayers, back in 2019, when the school was bought to referendum for a vote, I myself supported the one-school option, the new elementary school, because it was sold to us as a cost-saving option. And yes, it did save us money. In 2022, 2023, we had a $1.3 million realized savings. But that was quickly rolled over into the operating budget. It just vaporized. There was no realized saving, savings to the taxpayer as promised in the referendum. And then this year, we want to raise it by another $838,000. And I think a $500,000 reduction request is quite reasonable. So I hope everybody here can support this motion. Thank you.
All right. Who else would like to speak? Yes, here.
Hi. Greg Samuels, 283 Wormwood Hill Road. I would just like to say that one of the things, too, that he didn't bring up about, they want to have, there's going to be like 11 custodians between two schools. We had four schools before. We have two schools now. We're going to have more custodians. I don't understand that. My question is, too, how many custodians were working at each elementary school when we had three elementary schools?
All right, that's a question of fact that I will ask the superintendent. Do you have that information readily at hand or not? If you don't, it's okay, but if you can answer it.
What about the year before?
First, we have, without adding custodians, we have eight custodians. So there are four at the middle school, four at the middle elementary school.
And you want how many? You want, you wanted five of these, right? So four at each school and a roving.
That's correct.
Okay, why do we need a roving?
Eight, four, five, overtime, and substitute.
Okay. And I would like to add that when Mr. Dark gave his presentation, he told the town council he had no idea about last year's budget when they saved $42,000. He said he didn't know because he wasn't there. And nobody asked him, how could you do this year's budget without looking at last year's budget? It just doesn't make any sense to me. But I would actually support this, what he said, so.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to the amendment? Anyone else care to speak to the amendment?
I'm significantly shorter. Jeanette Picard, 72 Timber Drive. I am a member of the Board of Education, but I'm going to speak to you as a longtime resident of Mansfield and a public school teacher in another district. This is a very reasonable budget. We have a responsibility in Mansfield that we have always upheld for our children, and it's what makes our town great. My husband and I moved here over 30 years ago. We didn't have children. But we moved here because of the school systems, because we knew that when we did have children, that they would be well taken care of. We also knew that having a good school system helps your property values. This budget will help all of us, whether we have children or not. But I do want to point out a couple of things. As I said, I'm a public school teacher. Some of the things that have been put into our budget are there because kids are having a difficult time right now. The pandemic has made things very, very difficult. I still have to wear a mask because of an autoimmune disorder, and I feel very happy for many of you who don't. But our children are still suffering in other ways. And the positions that have been added are going to help those children. In addition, as part of a university town, we have many children who come to our school with different languages as their first language. And we have a responsibility to help those children to do their best and to find their way in our school system and later in our world. This budget is a reasonable budget. Last year, we had a decrease in the percentage. That's not something that is sustainable. We have a new building. It is multi-wing and multi-floor. It's not the old two-wings, single-floor building, so it will require additional work to keep and maintain those buildings. Let's think about what we're really doing, who we're really supporting, and who we really are responsible for as we put a budget together. Our children can't come up here and speak. They're probably in bed, I hope, at this point. But we can speak for them, and we can support them. And so I do not support this motion. Thank you.
Good. Uh, thank you. Uh, would someone else like to speak to the amendment? Um, I'm taking her first and then you. Get close to the mic. Good. It's...
All right, try it again. Uh, Tracy Rittenhouse, 18 Little Lane. I have a kid in sixth grade, a son in sixth grade, and a daughter at the high school. Um, we've been in Mansfield since 2011. Um, I came to the first town meeting, carrying a baby, talking about the schools and the changing, and I was so excited to have, be moving to a town that was going to be investing in a new school, um, for our children. Um, I'm super excited. I haven't been there yet for a tour. I'm on the list. I can't wait to see it. Um, we want this to be a town that supports families and has excellent schools. We love it here. We love that we have a reasonable school budget, and it's absolutely ridiculous to cut it by a large dollar amount at the last minute when we have children who are still recovering from being in lockdown and we have to resocialize our children. The teachers need some extra support. We need these extra positions. Um, we're going to feel the cost savings, uh, um, in the energy savings and the, in, in the new building. This is a very reasonable budget. I do not support this motion.
Thank you. Yes, do you, do you still wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Michael Lynch. I live at 143 Coventry Road. I don't support the motion. I don't support the motion because I moved to Mansfield, uh, almost two decades ago, precisely because of the schools. And the schools here, they're amazing. The new school that we built, I've been privileged enough to see it. The architect who designed the school lives across the street from me. He, his dog plays with my dog every day. He's amazing. He designed an incredible school. We are blessed to live in a place that values education as much as this town does. You and I need to support, uh, this budget, which is a very reasonable budget. Very reasonable budget. It's not, you know, perhaps the perfect budget. The perfect budget would be, we would pay no taxes and everything would be free. Everything would be free. Some people would love everything to be free and never contribute to anything. I think, however, in real life, we actually have to put our shoulder against the boulder of reality, push it up the hill, and realize that our children matter more than anything. I do not support this motion. I do support this budget. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, anyone else care to speak to the proposed amendment? Um, yes, sir.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sam Bruder. Um, I live at 380 Stores Road. That's my landlord. And I do not support this amendment. I have lived, and I was born in Kansas. I've lived in a lot of different places. I love to call Mansfield my home. I've graduated five children out of the Mansfield, uh, school system. I have two that are in the middle school. The reason why we've stayed here and made this our home and made the community connections that we have is specifically because of the value of education that they get. And for me, I, 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 I think that the Board of Ed and the staff have done a phenomenal job in, in doing their budget. And the positions that are being proposed as, uh, uh, being cut, I don't think that that is in line with what our town is. And for, for me, I, I don't support the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote on the, uh, motion then? I don't see anyone else asking to speak. The motion is to reduce the amount of Program 60001, Education K-8, by $500,000. So it will be $24,301,880. All those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no.
No.
Uh, the chair has determined that the, um, the, the, uh, motion failed. Moving along now, we are back to discussing the, um, the... Yes, sir. Oh, all right. We're back to discussing the budget as presented. The town council adopted budget as presented tonight. Uh, you, sir, at the edge.
I don't need to say my name again, do I?
Yes.
Oh, Greg Samuels, 283 Warmwood Hill Road. Uh, can I bring up, uh, number, uh, where is it? 404-69? Uh, it's page 32. It's, uh, Veterans Reimbursement. For, I'd like to start with a question. Is anybody on the town council a veteran? You are? Oh, thanks for your service. Awesome. 20 years Army.
Yeah, we have two, I think. I think another person raised their hand.
Okay, I'm just curious. You know, it's gone down every year, so I would like to, uh, change that and increase it. It's gone down. They, it, what, three years ago was $5,372, and then they took it down to $4,001, then $3,630, and then this year it's $3,450.
So just to clarify, this is a revenue source that's provided to the town by the state? So this is a state revenue source? That dollar amount is set by the state and not the town?
Oh, that's not the, uh, Veterans reimbor- oh, that's not Veterans reimbursement for, uh, for the property taxes, uh, assistance for veterans? That's the wrong line item number?
Um, I, no, it's not.
It's not what? It's, it's wrong? I'm wrong?
That is...
You know, what line item is...
Hold on just a minute. Uh, Ryan, would you, Town Manager Ryan Alesworth, would you explain, uh, what the, uh, what the item is, the revenue item that he's asking about? Veterans reimbursement.
So the revenue line that you're referring to, it's money that the state pays to municipalities. I, I could not speak to the, the formula, the criteria, how they derive that number, but that is a state aid number.
So long and short, that is not something that we're voting on tonight. That is something that is provided to the town by the state.
What, what, can somebody help me find the line item number then that is, uh, that assists veterans with, uh, property taxes? Town manager?
It's...
Um, I, I think I can answer that for you. So we have, um, veterans can apply for, um, tax credits. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm talking about the disability.
Yep.
Disabled, but where is that on the line item? But where's that in the budget?
It, it's not because it's a loss of a revenue. So basically what happens is your ta- as a veteran, your taxes or disabled veteran would be reduced by the amount that, um, the statute says. And I'm not sure what the exact amount is. But what happens is your taxes get reduced so that we have a revenue loss. And what the state does is reimburse us a portion of that revenue loss so we don't feel the full pain of that loss.
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't show, it's not an expenditure. It's not something we pay back. We don't...
You don't show that as a loss on here at all?
No.
No, okay. All right. No, thank you.
Okay. All right, we are discussed... Have you already spoken on the, on the main motion? All right. But first I want to ask, would someone else like to speak on the budget? Uh, Mr. Jordan. We'll get back to you because you can speak twice.
Thank you. Uh, William Jordan, 243 South Eguaville Road. Um, last year, we looked at a budget that was somewhat flat-lined. Um, I think this budget, as much as I don't like to see increases as a taxpayer, nobody does, I think this is a solid budget. I think the money that we're investing in the infrastructure of our roads is well done. I come from a background of road maintenance, so I get it. And I think our roads are looking great. The best thing about it is being done by our own people. We should be proud of that. That's good to talk. Another thing that I'd love to hear, the mayor said this tonight, we're finally identifying that our firehouses are kind of small. And it's about time we started looking at the firehouses. Some of you may know my background. I just recently retired, so I can say whatever. Lastly, I would like to move the question and bring this budget to a vote.
All right. Did I hear a second on? Yes, I did. All right. We have, uh, it's been moved and seconded. Is that, uh, debate end? And that we proceed directly to a vote on the budget. Uh, there will be no further comment if this motion passes. Uh, unlike most motions, this requires a two-thirds vote.
Correct.
Requires a two-thirds vote. Uh, so, uh, there's no further debate on this. Uh, yes, what's your point of order? Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, he wanted to speak, but he was, he had not been recognized to speak. Uh, any speaker is within his or her right to call the question. Uh, and, um, uh, if the majority, uh, if the two-thirds of the people here feel that someone has been cut off unjustly, that there were more points that ought to be heard from, then you should defeat this motion to end debate. But if you want to proceed directly to the vote on the budget, then you should support the motion to end debate. And, uh, that's just the rules. You can challenge that, that statement if you wish, but I can tell you that, uh, we do not restrict the, uh, a speaker from calling the question or ending, or making a motion to end debate. Uh, so, without further ado, uh... Uh, we don't debate the motion to close debate. So without further ado, all those in favor of closing debate and going to a vote on the main motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who are opposed to ending debate and voting on the main motion signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Because it's a two-thirds, I'm going to call for a count. Um, please get out your ballot and raise your hand when I call for the ayes and nays. And we will ask the, uh, town staff to count the, um, ayes and nays. Are you ready? All those in favor of closing debate and moving to vote on the main motion, please raise your ballot card.
What?
All right. The, the chair, uh, is going to, uh, ask for the nays at this point. All right. I think it's, uh, it's overwhelmingly two-thirds. So, uh, thank you for, uh, voting twice. Um, the motion has passed. We are now ready to vote on the main motion. Uh, these are the budget resolutions that are in your packet. And I'll give you the page number. It is, uh, pages four and five. Without objection, I will not read these. I've referred to them in your packet on page four, five. The, uh, four-part motion that Mr. Shaken made at the, at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, this is a paper ballot vote. So yes or no? Mark your ballot and, and bring it forward.
Oh, no, you're still in there. You're still in there. Maybe this should go.
Is that it, you guys?
We're going to start counting.
Okay. Has everyone who is voting placed their ballot in a ballot box? Has everyone voted who wishes to vote? Oh, okay. All right. We will be counting the votes now, and I will announce a total when the votes are counted. Thank you very much for participating and for voting. Yes, sir.
I'm not trying to get you off, but I'm telling you, I did not so much as speak. I did not realize that you wanted to... You had already spoken once. That person had not spoken. The words are that you needed to get a second chance. Here's half of everyone else has spoken. No, you don't understand, but you had not spoken yet. You spoke, but it's a part of what you have to say. You want to see today. Yes, two-thirds of the people in school and debate. They didn't... It's only handled by people on the other team. They get back to... There's no backing against it. Your fellow citizens voted to end debate. I'm sorry. And I said, I made it very explicit, that if they didn't want to end debate, they should vote against that. They had the opportunity to vote against the motion, therefore I would have called on you, but that doesn't what happened. I have to yield. I'm not in charge. The people at this meeting are in charge. I am not in charge. That is not giving you the floor. That is saying you will have the floor in the future. Understood that if there is going to be a future, there's no future. Debate ended. Check it out.
No, but you know, Joe Delong did write a op-ed that said the government was fixing the budget. Usually not a great idea to do that to a government. We're not getting any answers. Right. Yeah. I mean, he can get away with it a little bit, because everybody has the answer, and everybody has a handle on it. It's a little bit... Eh, no, it's a push. Well, we don't have an agenda, so we can't convene. Oh, we did? Except for people imply. You will tell people. We can do it on the... I don't have any notes, for sure.
Have your attention, please. I have the count on the motion to adopt the budget. 107, yes. 18, no. The budget was passed by the meeting. Thank you very much. So without further ado, we're adjourned.